Okay, your line.
Welcome. In accordance with the provisions of Mass-
Reporting in progress.
Oh, wait. Welcome.
No, no, that's, that's a late.
Sorry.
In accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the Zoning Board of Appeals is meeting tonight, Wednesday, July 16, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Meeting Room 124, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in person at One Liberty Lane or by a remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection.
I'll make a motion that we open the meeting for July 16, 2025, at 7:05 PM.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7:00 PM. We're a little late. Sorry about that. One Pine Street.
Do I still read it in?
Yeah, you still need to read it.
Okay, so I'm gonna read it in now?
Yep.
Notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter 40A, Section 9 and 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws and any of all amendments there to that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. on Wednesday, July 16, 2025, for the following application. One Pine Street Realty Trust at 7:00 PM for a special permit from Norfolk zoning bylaws, Sections 310, 4.2, and 310, 10.7A, 2D, to allow the installation of a gasoline and diesel fueling station, in addition to a variance from Section 310-10.4B to A to allow a 22-foot by 72-foot canopy over the fueling area to be 25.5 feet from Dedham Street where 70 feet is required. Reference to Sezus Map, 9, Lot 81, Lot 13, and the C1 zoning district.
Just a overview of the project and the permitting that's involved with it. The conversion of the former transit seating buildings, which we're talking about, One Pine Street, there opened up a public hearing for site plan approval with the planning board at the July 8th Plan Board meeting. The peer review is ongoing, so that's not complete. So just to let you know, that's occurring. The public hearing was continued to the August 12th meeting. And at the July 9th meeting, the public hearing for the notice of intent was opened up. That was continued as well to the August meeting, in order to have the peer review fully underway, in terms of both site plan and the Wetlands Protection Act and local bylaw. So for tonight, they're here for you for the use. I would imagine you would want to be able to get that peer review of some of the comments. So tonight would be more so just to hear the presentation and any butters and then continue to your next meeting.
Just a question. Do we have to have a separate vote to open the hearing? Have we voted to open the meeting?
Yeah, you did. Yeah. Yes.
Alright, so you want to make another formality?
Jump ahead.
Okay. Alright, so I'll just make a motion that we open the, we open the meeting to the public hearing, as I just read in. Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
So you just gave us the overview of the application, a little out of order. It sounds like what they're, is this going to be a public filling station, or is it going to be a private use filling station?
No, no, it's for the, open to the public. It's a gas station.
It's gonna be a gas station with the barn still there? They're not removing the barn, or they changing the barn?
Nope. The barn remains. You'll see, I'll put up some renderings of it. It's gonna be retrofitted into a convenience store.
Okay.
And then you'll see as well, they added a canopy with a pitch roof to kind of mimic and match the barn. Their engineer and the applicant are both online. And Hal, the engineer's gonna make the presentation via Zoom.
Hal, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yep. I've made you a co-host. Do you want to-
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Are you ready?
Yes, we are. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Al Schuber. I'm a consulting engineer with offices at 112 State Road in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and I do represent the applicant on this application. As Richard indicated, this is the, what you have in front of you tonight is the first hearing of the special permit and variance application. So the property is located at the intersection of Dedham Streets, Route 1A and Pine Street in Lincoln. It's located in the commercial C1 zoning district. And I'm sure you're all familiar with the place. I heard that the app, the chairman was concerned about the barn, whether the barn is still there or not. And I'll tell you that, you know, we did design our gas station around the barn and keeping in mind that this is a landmark in the town of Norfolk and you want to keep it. Just to give you a little background, I've been working with Richard and the various departments in the town for the past eight, nine months. So we had at least three or four informal meetings where we changed the plans. You know, we went to the first version of the plan. We sat down, there were some concerns. We went back to the drawing boards. We changed the plans, came back the second, third time to make sure that we address all the comments and concerns from the board. Again, this is gonna go for peer review, so we're, you know, but we wanted to, tonight is kind of introduction to the project, and we wanted to get some feedback from you. Same thing as we did with the planning board last week. So, as I mentioned, the property is located in the C1 district. May I share my screen, Elaine, if I can?
Um, I did make you a co-host, but, um, yeah.
You should be able to. Are you co-
Okay, then. Let me try it then, because I want to go over what's there now and then while we try to do.
And I'm gonna, just for continuity, I'm gonna follow along with you have in the room, because, so the board, well, actually, mostly could, well, except for, why you can't really see it. You can see it, Courtney, right?
Yeah, I can see that better.
Alright. Okay.
Can you see?
Yes, yep. We can see it very well.
Okay, thank you. So this is the property, and the property is about almost two acres, 1.98 acres. But most of, 1.2 acres of the property right now, which is fronting Pine and Dedham, is already developed with the 3,600 square foot building. You all know the barn-shaped building in this area here. Access to the property is via two existing driveways, one from Pine Street and one from Dedham Street. They're both full access driveway means in, enter and exit. To the, to the south of the property, there's a big portion of wetlands, and also to the west of the property is the Stock River. So if you apply the 200-foot riverbank, this is where the riverbank is almost going through the middle of the, of the, of the building. We'll go to the site plan. With the site plan, what we wanted to do here, and as you see, this is the 200-foot buffer of the river, and we wanted to stay outside, obviously outside the 200-foot buffer. And if you apply the setbacks, you really don't have much room. You may have a very small area here, but it's right against the driveway, another very small area here against the driveway. So the best place for the canopy would be where we showed on the plan. As I mentioned before, this is a special permit for the use first, because the use is only allowed by a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeal. And also, we need a relief on the setback for the canopy, for the front setback. Again, I did submit a memo to the Zoning Board of Appeal explaining that if we apply the 70-foot setback from the front, because as you see, this lot has almost 600 linear feet of frontage, because it's a corner lot and a curve. And if you apply the 70 feet, most of that area here, almost 40,000 square feet, which is almost an acre, half of the lot is within the setback. So really, and because of the soil conditions in the back with the wetlands and the shape of the lot, so I think we can, we can justify the variance for this project. And again, you know, the tanks would be located to the north of the existing building. I did submit plans showing the delivery of the fuel. There's no issue with the fuel truck coming in and coming out from the site. The, all the underground fuel storage tanks would be double tanks in compliance with, and all the fueling system, the fire canopy, the fire suppression will be in compliance with local, state, and federal regulations. Our desk will have to go for another review with the Fire Marshal. Again, because of the, 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 the wetlands in the back, we did file with HONCON. It's going through a peer review. And at this time, we're gathering all the comments, feedback, and concerns from all the different, different boards, so we can make the changes to the plans that hopefully one time, and we don't have to go back and reopen or close hearing. The, I wanted to show you what the building would look like. This is some of the drainage. I mean, stormwater would be reviewed by the, by the peer review again, and will be in compliance with Mass. DEP. The site is already developed, so we do have water on the site. We do have gas, and we do have an existing septic and infiltration system. We do have some proposed landscape in the front, and again, this will be a review through the section review. The existing building, this is the existing building, and we're trying to preserve the building to the extent practical, because, you know, I, I know how much, you know, first when, when my client came to my office and looked, you know, showed me the site, I didn't know what the building looked like, the kind of, and I said, you know, we need to get rid of this building. This is how it's gonna work. He said, no, 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 you don't understand. We need to keep the building. We need to work around the building, because we would like, the town would like to, and I would like to keep the building. So this is, we do some modification to the building side on, on the, this is the parking lot or Dedham Street site, where we have an entrance to the building. The one-facing pine, we're, we're keeping that barn door, you know, which is, I think adds to the character of the building. This is the layout. The floor layout is basically a convenience store with some walk-in coolers and, you know, making it all the bathrooms and the gap accessible, will be in compliance with all building codes. This is the canopy elevation, and I think Richard mentioned, you know, we have an A-frame canopy with the metal roof that would match the existing building. So this way, we can tie the two together. I do have a rendering of, you can see the rendering of what the site would look like with the canopy and the A-frame roof. And again, like I said, we would like to get your feedback and whatever concerns you have, so this way we can, we can add to what we heard from the planning board and obviously the conservation and the peer review, and we can make the changes that we need to make. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
What, I'm trying to see on the plan what the setback is to the canopy from the road itself, from your property line.
25.5.
25.5. It's from the, I'm going to that sheet.
Okay.
One corner's at 39 and the other's at 25.5.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a question?
Yeah, I see that now.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a question?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess the one thing that's gonna come to my attention is that we have to consider a variance for this, right?
Right.
And, you know, one of the things is that, you know, thinking about whether it's gonna be soil, or topography, whatever. I mean, one of the things is the building. It's the building that's pushing this to the, to the front, if I'm correct, right?
Yeah.
So-
There's no room at the back.
So, if we're not moving the building, or we're not changing the building, it, that's creating one of the limiting factors for their space in front. I'm not sure how that works into being able to consider the variance.
Building itself.
I mean, granted, it looks very nice for what it is. It's just more of, now I'm gonna be concerned also a number of parking spaces that get putting in here. That's this, that's my second concern.
That has to do with the peer review, though, I think.
Right. But the thing is, but going back to the variance side of our-
Sure.
I'm just wondering, will we properly have the ability to give a variance based on either soil, topography, but yet the building is really a criteria?
They have a wetlands buffer that you can probably hang your hat on as pushing the pumps to the front of the lot, if you wanted to.
Okay.
And, I mean-
That's a soil condition.
It is a soil condition, and I, and I also believe, I don't know.
Structure also.
You could argue it's a corner lot.
Correct.
Can I?
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. What's the existing pump house? On the, on the left corner of the sheet, existing pump house? Cause I-
I believe that's, that's a well, a water well, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm not sure what it's used for, but I mean, I can get, I mean, I can, I can-
What's the aquifer?
Yeah, but we're not doing anything to it, but I'll, I, I can-
Just gives a dimension?
Yeah, and I'd want to know the distance to that. If the well is actually in the pump house, or where's the well head in comparison to your lot? I'd want to know.
Well, it's right on the, the pump house is right in between the two properties, which my client owns. I did the property to the, to the east too. So in relation, if you can, in relation to where the pumps are going, I can tell you that this is over 100 feet or 120 feet.
Whose well is it?
Yeah, I, I'd want to know what it fed, cause I believe that's an old aquifer and now and that was an old artesian well for that when it was a field.
I, I believe you're correct.
Yeah, so I just want to know. Just give me a number there.
In the text of the application, there's reference to a Zone 2 wellhead area, but I don't see it marked on the plan.
Right.
I don't think this well is necessarily the thing that's generating the Zone 2, but I was just wondering what the, if that's-
No. I'd just like to know where the head is.
Yeah.
There is, uh, but again, probably beyond peer review.
I have another, I have another question. Did, did you have to come, or did the previous owners have to come before the zoning board to get a variance in order to put the building up?
I, I didn't see that. What they, I met with the building inspector a few times, and I don't believe, see, because this is in the over, also in the mixed-use over, in the mixed-use overlay district. And the mixed-use overlay district, I believe it was 30 feet for the, for the setback, but we didn't know when setback to apply, so we went with the most stringent one, figuring if we need to get a, you know, variance, we'll get the variance from the board. But this is something I can check, because the, obviously, if it's a 70-foot setback, that building is an existing non-conforming building.
Correct. So on the screen behind you, there's the, the Zone 2?
Okay.
Yeah, no, I have the line.
The Zone 2 has a different setback than residential?
Uh, the Zone 2 is a wellhead protection area for public water supply. So that's its own special buffer to protect public water as opposed to private water supply.
I'm sure that's-
Could you do a quick measurement on that?
So all, so are all the canopies, they all are within the 70-foot setback?
What do you want to measure the?
Uh, just the, just the-
Yes, they are.
Oh, the building, that's the building itself is in the Zone 2. So the canopies are right on the other side of the Zone 2 wellhead.
Right.
Yeah, oh yeah. That's the intention, to keep everything out of the 200-foot buffer and the, the aquifer Zone 2. And that's another reason why we think, you know, we can, you know, we have a unique lot with shape and topography and soils, so, and structure too.
Which direction is the water flowing here? The groundwater?
I would, I would think it's-
No, no, groundwater moves to the side. I don't think it usually-
The Stop River flows that way.
It's probably in the same flow as the Stop River.
Flowing towards Walpole.
I'm just, it's my, the question behind it is if the gas tanks leak, is it leaking in the, with the ground flow, with the-
It's gonna affect my cows. I'll ever go through my backyard.
I'm just, the flow of the water underground usually moves kind of sideways, and so I'm asking which question, or I'm asking which way the water is moving here. Like, what are the hydrodynamics? Because if the oil leaks, is it going to push towards the river or is it going in a different direction?
It's a double wall.
No, he's putting double walls in, so he's gonna have to test for it.
Double wall with full alarm, full alarm system. So it works.
Also, they're almost foolproof.
Yeah, they are.
They have double wall filler pipes as well.
What about all the drips on the ground, though?
No, no, that's different on the top.
That's totally different on the top.
Yeah, well, I know, but I'm just saying, it's, the drinking water supply is very close by. I'm just asking which way the water, if it, when it runs off, is it going to seep into the ground and run towards our drinking water as it seeps further down to the aquifer, or is it going to go in the other direction?
Well, I think that's what the peer review's for. For our intensive purposes, we're talking zoning.
Well, I think it's use-related, though, because what's in front of us is a special permit for the use, but-
It is use-related.
So I'm asking if the use is safe, given the other uses, the adjacent surrounding land uses such as public water supply.
And I think that's why they have to go through the other, the other hearings before we can actually finish out our determination. We need to hear what they have to say before we do that. But the, the question on the table is special permit for the use and a variance for the setbacks. Now, underground-
Some of the questions you're asking actually are good questions, and I think some of the peer review will, like I said, you'll, you're raising questions, and I have them-
From what I-
I just didn't know if the engineer on the horn knew it often.
From what I understand, an underground tank still is a structure. Is that correct?
We, it's exempted in the structure, cause I just read it.
Yeah, not for, not for setback, no.
Not for setback.
Those were above-ground tanks?
Yes.
That would be a totally different, he'd need a variance for that.
Okay, alright.
But those are underground tanks. And we put them at Daley's, right? They're right on the road.
Yep.
Right, they just have a cover.
Yeah.
So I thought that that metal roof was over that at first, but it's not. You can see it on a site plan. It's just too concrete.
Right.
Um, that's, yeah, the canopy.
Yeah. Well, in, in keeping with town, I think if you, if you think about Daley's and you think about this in town, we're, yeah, we're, we're within, you know, we're in variance mode on both of them.
Yeah.
Do both of them have a variance?
I don't know. I'd hope Daley's did, but-
Do both.
Daley's not a pre-existing non-conforming?
I don't know if they had a canopy back then.
No, they had a much smaller canopy on the other street.
You have to install a canopy, not one pumps or fire suppression.
I don't remember the canopy coming to our attention, meaning it, I don't think it was a variance for it. I don't recall of it. I don't recall.
Or this.
Yeah, because obviously the one on Dedham Street would be the closest, and that's not 70 feet, I wouldn't think.
What's going on at the-
Oh, the one, the one at the Gulf Station?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's definitely not 70 feet.
So I guess I'd want to know that. If we gave-
Yeah.
We've already set precedence.
We've already set precedence with Daley's and Gulf.
If they both had variances, if they moved that canopy back to 71 feet, then they didn't.
Right.
That's- Mr. Chairman, let me ask Rich a question. Rich, on the, with the planning board, do you know in the peer review, what's the scope of their review? Is they gonna be reviewing some of these things like traffic, sightlines, groundwater, the whole, is it limited to certain things that-
No, no, that, that's all within the scope of it. Cause they got a stormwater review as well, so.
We've got a-
And that's done by BETA, right?
Traffic impact report.
I saw that, yeah.
Some initial stormwater discussion. But yeah, I was just wondering, because I know it's close, but not next to it, but the concern more with is, I mean, part of it is stormwater and the dribbles.
And how do we-
What do you, what do you find in for a measurement? So that one looks like it's probably like 80 feet, so.
Yeah, I thought that one-
So that one might make it. That's the Gulf Station?
I'd want to know the answer to that.
Yep.
If, if one or both.
Well, this one appears to be good as far as 70.
I don't trust that too well.
I know, but I-
I don't know.
It can be off 10 feet and eight.
80 feet, though, is within the realm of the-
Yeah, I don't remember a variance for that canopy at the Gulf Station.
No, they would have intentionally put that on the setback.
No, but I was here for a long time. I don't remember, I remember the Gulf Station coming to us, but not the canopy.
So in terms of, yeah, I wouldn't-
So would it just-
It's general reference for property lines, but in terms of what's on the ground, it's scaling off what, 81 feet, so.
And I don't remember coming, they came to us. They, we didn't do, we didn't do variance for the canopy, if I remember correctly.
It would have just been a special permit for the use?
I believe so. I believe so, yes.
Is there a way to check? Is there a way to check?
Daley's?
Two, two, two Rockwood Road, Daley's?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I'll.
Daley's in the same zoning district?
No, it's in the V one.
The town center has a different zoning district, so I thought it had, uh, zero lot lines in it.
Oh, well, then it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
So then, no, that doesn't matter, but.
Is there anything else on Dedham Street recent?
Entirely perturbed about the setback, as long as it doesn't have crazy illumination or illuminated sign it on it.
That's on the planning board.
Because that's when it's, I, I mean, I know, that, but they're asking for setback relief, and I'm just saying, ancillary setback relief again is, don't make it obnoxious to help with welfare, and that's glare and light and all that crap.
I mean, they, the building's already in the seventy-foot setback.
Yeah, but I'm only talking about the canopy.
No, I agree, but I'm, I'm, I mean, they're making it worse by putting a canopy, but.
No, I don't think the building is.
It is.
Seventy-three?
The building is seventy-three and seventy.
Seventy feet and.
Yeah, probably.
The building was set out of the, I'm sure it's a seventy-foot setback, and it's.
They have a building setback line, which is dotted, and it looks like it goes right through the building.
It is.
Oh, that's for the, for, for the, um.
That, that's the two-hundred-foot, I believe.
No, it's, it goes over, it's within the setback.
Yeah, I think.
The corner's within a setback.
It says seventy-three point eight feet.
I see that.
That corner?
Yeah, too, and I see the corner that says seventy point seven.
Yeah, I think maybe your setback is, line is off.
Hal, you, the build, the, this, what sheet has the setback off of the street on it?
It's sheet number four, uh, I'm on sheet number four, I believe.
Seventy, seventy point seven on one corner, and seventy-three point eight on the other. Well, that would say he's good for the setback on the building.
Right.
He gets seventy point seven.
Right, right, this much.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, by about that much.
Yeah.
The building is setback, I will say, as part of the internal discussion, just in terms of the placement of the canopy, it was closer, or had less of a setback to the street.
Yeah.
But because of circulation from.
You're gonna get fire lanes in there, you gotta get the fuel truck in there.
To move, yeah, to move emergency vehicles, so that the, the canopy ended up coming closer to, um, Dedham and Pine.
Yeah.
I have never seen a purveyor of gasoline who wants to tuck their pumps behind the building anyway.
No.
That's true.
I agree.
Right, yeah, makes, yeah, and his, his site doesn't allow him anyway, because of.
Yeah, and we wouldn't want him to, so that, and they've got an odd-shaped lot, they've got the corner lot issue, they've got the soil issue from the wetlands.
You, you mentioned, Corey mentioned, is there a string point about the illumination around this area? Well, I don't know if it's in our guise, but it should be discussed when it gets back to the planning board, maybe, that this intersection is not lit, meaning there's no streetlights at this intersection. Well, you have the traffic light, the poles that are there, no streetlights. So I don't know if this warrants getting that rectified, because it's always been an issue in this intersection that we don't have streetlights.
Even Four Kicks doesn't have a light on that with the number of people that are leaving?
It's, it's, the local businesses, they have their lights on, you have a little bit of light, but otherwise, it's the streetlight only.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, some, some that should have been rectified.
Can I ask, uh, Rich to find out, answer to a question? Has, has this ever been proposed to the zoning board before?
That's what I was.
A previous applicant, because I believe Tedeschi's tried to get this years ago and do this.
Were they on the other corner?
A plot, no, no, they are on the other corner, because they couldn't do it here. So, I, I'm just curious, like, if this has been, it'd be long before the building was even built, long before the barn was built.
Yes, I remember that.
I mean, it's, I'm thinking thirty years ago.
I don't remember that one.
So.
I can, I don't know if I can get an answer for you tonight.
No, no, no.
But I can definitely, yeah.
From the next, I'd just like to know if there was any relief.
Previous?
So, two things, I want to know if there was relief asked for, for the barn, and I want to know if relief has been asked for before for the lot.
Okay, alright.
Because I don't think anyone is on the board that long here.
Gonna have to go to the.
Not, not that.
Gonna have to go to the Norfolk room in the library and go look at the minutes from nineteen twenty-two.
Yeah.
Over fifteen, maybe more.
Yeah, were you here when Burt Russo was it?
Which one?
Burt Russo.
No, not Burt Russo, not that one.
So, that was, that was in here this. Um, that, that's my.
I'm forgetting, I'm forgetting some of the names now.
How long have you been at?
Long time ago.
The whole time?
Fifty-seven years.
Is that the whole time?
No, it's a surprise.
I have to ask, I don't know.
The wells are, we gotta watch, we gotta watch.
It's a private.
In the same spot?
All right, we got too many conversations going again. We, we have another, we have another question about sidewalk.
Just, just a question to the, to the engineer, um, the paved sidewalk, I'm just curious, is that existing, is the, is the applicant gonna have that sidewalk? I'm just curious.
What sidewalk?
It says paved sidewalk right in front of the property.
Yeah, one seven.
Is that existing, or is he gonna?
It's on one fifteen, it's probably on one fifteen.
It's there now?
Yeah.
And it's on Dedham Street also?
If you look on the image above, when the state road was.
Yeah, when we did that road.
State road came through, yeah, did that.
But there's none on this side, on here.
No, there's none on Dedham.
But how is it on the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's existing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Is this gas only, or are they also thinking, uh, charging, charging station? Uh, well, no, I was thinking electric charging.
It'll be, um, it's planning, it's planned for future of, for EV, yeah.
It's a.
He, um, I think the bylaw only references gas and diesel, but.
Yeah, so we did, at the Maytown meeting, we just added, um, EV charging.
There's an EV one.
Okay.
Right, because next door, I hear.
Yeah, because of next door.
Right, parking lot, a crack.
Two doors down, yeah, two properties down.
It's a business, charging stations.
Oh, absolutely, but I'm sure our local electric vehicle owners wouldn't mind a supercharger, you know?
Especially while they're going in and getting their yoo-hoos.
I have seen two odd, oddities at gas stations recently, and once was, one was an Amish guy pulling up the horse and carriage, and the other was a Tesla, and I'm like, neither of you have business here at this gas station.
Just wanted a drink.
Yeah, so it is, um.
You're right, going in for their yoo-hoo.
Hal, the, um, the well was for the property owner there, wasn't, um.
Yeah, that well, that well's been there fifty years.
Yeah.
That is a, that was a public, uh, supply, because it came out of that, that, that river goes all the way behind Mitch's.
Yeah.
It's a reason why none of that was able to be developed.
That's where the other, no comment.
And Rich, one more question, do you know when the peer review expects to have the report in?
Yes, I do, it'll, it'll be within the next week or two.
Okay.
Because they're back before the, the planning board on the twelfth, so it's, I can forward it.
The Stop River feeds Highland Lake, and then it comes out of the dam there and comes back down out behind my property. And, uh, the sewer treatment plant dumps into it.
Where's the outfall relative to your cows?
Uh, right out back.
Are you up or down?
I'm downstream.
Bummer. Is it influent dominant, or, or do you know?
It doesn't actually affect me, because I have a tributary stream that goes into it.
Yeah.
My stream is clean and upstream from it.
Well, what the, you know, what they're discharging would be clean anyway, it wouldn't have, yeah, it wouldn't have pooh-poohs in it or anything.
Anybody else got anything to say?
You guys have anything else?
Nope.
No.
No.
I think, um, we should make a motion.
Those three things, right, the well?
Yes.
Variance for the, for existing building variance for the property ever applied for.
Right. Do we, do we should be closing the meeting, or?
I don't continue.
Then we just continue, make a motion to continue.
What date should we continue to?
Twentieth of August is your next meeting.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
Yes.
What time?
Yep, um.
Well.
Yeah, we already have one at seven oh one.
So the question is, do you want to tackle this a little bit before the continual late, well, fourteen Stop River appeal, or do you want to do it after that? I mean.
You want to put them both at seven oh one?
Well, we.
Or, or do one seven?
Yeah, you could.
Can we take the case first, this?
This first?
See what I'm saying, do this at seven, we have one at seven oh one.
Yeah.
So just say.
You want to do this first, not Stop River?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Right. Okay, that's what I'm saying, that's why, I agree.
I think this, we'll go through that, and I think we'll be faster, right?
For continuous purpose, why don't you do it seven, that way?
That's right, seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll make a.
Before we make a motion, I'd, I'd just like to ask the engineer, were you looking for any feedback from us, other than the three questions that we really have?
Uh, no, not really, I want to, you know, I know you had a question about the sidewalk, and this came up during the planning board, too, we're trying to tie the, the cross, the sidewalk from Dedham Street on the North Hurley side to Pine, I think this, we're gonna take this into consideration, but, uh, no, and most of your comments will be answered through peer review, and, but, as far as the setbacks and relief, if I may, I mean, really, even if you granted this, you're not setting a precedent, because normally, you would look at, for variances, you need to look at case by case.
I, I understand.
So, I really believe that this lot could be, with the constraints in the back, with the river and the wetland, and, and zone two, and the building on the site, and the shape of the lot, I think it really is, uh, a, a, a good candidate for a variance. And, and I just wanted to add, I heard something about, like, the leak, yeah, I didn't mention that, all the, the, the structures on site, the drain structures have, uh, the, uh, deep sump, and they have oil-water separators, and then, after all the, the runoff is collected, it's going to a BMP structure, like a void sentry or, or, uh, uh, four fifty I for treatment before discharge. And again, we also have a valve, if you look at the grading and range plans, we do have a valve that we can control, in case there's a big spillage from on-site, that you can, you know, shut, shut off that valve, and then it won't, you know, water won't get into the filtration system, but.
What's the maintenance plan for the tree, for the stormwater structures? They only work when they're maintained, especially with oil capture?
Yeah, inspection twice a year, and, uh, and cleaning, every, it's on the, normally, it's four times a year, and cleaning probably twice a year, they, they pump the water out whenever it's needed, so.
Okay. The, the only other thing that I would like to know is if the Gulf Station ever requested a variance for their canopy.
Mm-hmm.
I'll double-check, it doesn't seem as if it is.
It doesn't seem like it?
Yeah.
But if they, if they did, and then set it back because of that.
And I understand his concern, it's individual, but this is not a, this is not a use of this lot, so he's asking for a use.
Would you want the, um, Beta to be at the next meeting, if you had any questions for them?
I think, I, I, I think, to be honest, if I could see that.
The third-party reviewer.
If I could see the report more than a or two before.
We can see the report early, Mike.
Then I think we could get some questions, maybe to Beta via you, um, but if it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really, yeah, I don't, I don't think so, not at this point.
See, if you're anticipating the peer review report is done next week anyway, that means that it would be ready for distribution three weeks before our next meeting, too, that gives us time to.
Yeah, that'd give us plenty of time to see if we have.
To see the level of concern in whether or not we want to call in Beta or just ask questions to.
Okay, alright, let's see how that.
We got time, we can play about here.
Definitely.
The planning board will meet before us.
Yep.
Yeah.
And before I make the motion, I was gonna mention, um, can Rich, can be, can we have them review the, the lighting at that intersection? Can we ask?
Yeah, in terms of.
Yeah, can I ask someone, okay, ask you to make sure that gets discussed?
I will ask them, in terms of this lighting, is there isn't lighting question?
There is not lighting.
Too much lighting question.
Yeah, okay, so, please, and the other, I just want to mention, the drawings I'm looking at, like the one that's on the display right now?
Mm-hmm.
And the rendering they're showing us, are we, are we indicating exact number of trees, or whatever, that's being shown there? It's not.
Or is it just, uh, just?
Or they're showing bushes, or, you know? I've only, the rendering doesn't match what I'm seeing on the drawing.
But, yeah, I think that's planning more, that, that, that will be.
That structure's right.
Right, so he's asking strictly for variances for.
Okay, I just want to mention that I saw a difference between the rendering and that.
Planning board's gonna tell them how many trees and what diameter and where they go.
No, it's a fair point, so, will you represent Hal on the rendering should match the site plan?
It should, I mean, what we did on the first, no, there's some missing trees that is not, I mean, existing that's here now, because it was an air, I guess we superimposed the aerial to, to the, uh, to the canopy, but we'll, we'll make sure they both match.
Okay, yes.
That will come, yeah.
Okay.
The only thing that I would say that, if you could ask, would be to get the sidewalk around the site and coming down Dedham, but again, I, I think that would be for later, but, um, they're gonna improve the site, make the walk, because the person that improves the next site can make it go down, and then.
Agreed.
I, I, I think, I think that's part of, uh, site cost.
Correct.
And it, and it doesn't need to be taken in by the town.
Yeah, the one, I want to ask your thought on, it probably would. It would, if anything, it probably would be on the other side of the street.
Right, well, there's got to be some type of town plan that shows where it's gonna be eventually.
Well, no, the only reason why I say is this, this is all, this, this prop, if you look on behind you.
Mm-hmm.
This is the, uh, that property there is under conservation restriction.
Mm-hmm.
Stop River.
And then you come down the Valley Street, so you're, there is some, there is businesses on the other, opposite side.
Right, right.
Is that what you're thinking, or on their side?
On their side, so that anybody can walk, cross over and walk down and go in, or, I, I think that sidewalk should be in front of both sides of the gas station.
Well, they're showing it on Pine Street.
Right.
Yeah, it's already existing, the Dedham Street sidewalk.
I just think it should come around them.
It'd be nice to have a sidewalk on Dedham Street.
You know, eventually, that's gonna get developed, I know you say it has a restriction, but, uh, there's always.
There's always change.
Even if there's a, even if there's a CR on it, which are actually very difficult to break, but even if there's a CR on it, you can still run a sidewalk in the right of way.
Of course.
That's just a town expense at that rate, which is, however, I would argue that the sidewalk on that side of the street is a better gig, because there's industrial on the other side, which means heavy trucks, and unless you want to play pancakes with children with each curb cut, I would, I would put it on the other side of the road where there aren't curbs.
Yeah, I was only thinking the other side, because there are businesses, and somebody wanted to walk in there.
Putting the sidewalk in make the, it makes the separation between the canopy and that line closer, doesn't it? No, they're already, no, the setbacks not being measured from the street, the setback's being measured from the property, right?
Right, the property line on Dedham Street looks like it goes right to the road.
Does it?
It's pretty close.
Pretty good, no, there's seventy, we're seventy-three point eight, there's gonna be ten feet there.
Oh, yeah, no, you're definitely.
Yeah.
So you think there's enough room to get that in?
Well.
There's enough room to, yeah, worst-case scenario.
So what is the, just on the sidewalk conversation, one of the question was potentially having a, a sidewalk from Dedham and Pine that necessarily was more direct to the property as opposed to, so that was one of the things that I was looking at, too.
I, I would agree, from where the corner is, I'd cut one right through to the canopy.
Yeah.
Now you're directing people into traffic flow, and you can't do that.
I know that's a downside, so.
I would not go for that, so.
They should plan for some kind of pedestrian access, though, to the property, because little, kids will walk here to buy sodas and stuff. And there is actually no interior pedestrian access. This is, this is a site plan issue, though, we'll defer to the planning board, but if they wanted to think about interior pedestrian circulation, especially if they are thinking about putting chargers in there, because those people are sitting around for twenty minutes, which means that they mill about.
Right, and, again, the, the master plan calls the additional sidewalks linking it to development where possible. to development where possible. So, again, whether they're putting a sidewalk, even if they're putting it on Dedham Street for us, it'd be great to get a sidewalk out of this. Some sort of increase in sidewalk is always a good thing to get.
Vehicle protection too at a major intersection.
Obviously.
All right, are we good?
Yep.
Nothing else?
I think you should make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion that we continue the hearing to August 20th at 7:00 PM.
A second. All approve.
Aye.
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 So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
Good night.
Uh.
Is there any other business?
Do we have any other business tonight?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
So, you have executive session minutes to approve with no discussion.
No.
And then under, and then under any other unanticipated business, we're gonna talk about zoning that you had talked about the last meeting, which I didn't get on the agenda, but we're gonna talk about unanticipated.
As far, as far as the.
It's extracted, isn't it?
I, I put together some language for you to look at, just some things to spitball for conversation.
Wasn't it in the shared folder?
Short conversation.
Yeah, it was in there.
Cause I, I read it, cause it, it was that information about what you were talking about with the.
Well, just to answer the question, it was, it's under unanticipated.
As far as the minutes, I reviewed the minutes.
Yeah, that's my answer.
All right, so I have no problem approving them if everyone agrees.
Yep.
All approve. Let's make a motion to approve the minutes for executive session.
Do it individually?
Individually.
Remind me the dates then.
They're right, they're right on this one.
Uh, can we put the approval for all of them in one motion?
Can I do it in one motion?
As submitted? Cause nobody's gonna edit?
You should do them separately.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for January 15th, executive session.
Um, do I hear a second?
Second.
All approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll also make a motion that we approve the minutes for March 19th, executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes for May 21st.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Okay, so I could sign those tonight.
All right, so with that, we have no correspondence, we have some new business that, um.
New, I mean, other anticipated.
Not an anticipated business of possibly discussing.
Yeah.
Some things.
So, I have a Courtney provided on the screen to what.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, very good.
Yeah, so.
Can you blow that up a little bit because my eyesight's not quite as good as it used to be?
Sure.
You can read it.
I can, but.
Let's go 130, how's that?
Yeah.
No, I can go a little more.
That makes even my right eye happy.
Go a little more if you want.
Catching up the left eye.
Still have room.
More?
No, you're good.
All right.
Everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It might be.
So, what do we hear?
So, this is under nonconforming uses.
I'm gonna give Courtney the floor.
Okay.
Tell us what it's.
Let me, let me tell you which ones are splitting hairs versus not splitting hairs and some of the rationale. Uh, the first exception for nonconforming single family uses, including existing accessory structures, uh, the thing that sticks in my craw is whether or not we're going to see somebody take like a garage that's sitting in the setback. Like, it's better when it's an existing structure. It hurts our feelings a little more when, you know, if they want to do something like extend that garage a little bit. If it's existing, that doesn't bother us as much, I think, as when somebody says, I'm gonna put, you know, like a new structure there because my lot is already nonconforming. And so, this is just a thought and feel free to reject whether or not we want to limit our exceptions just for existing as opposed to new accessory structures that might benefit from some nonconformities.
So, the one thing I was just thinking about, Corey, was we did the special permit provision, how's it jive with?
I, uh, so, there's the special permit provision and so I was having thoughts about this, whether or not this creates a conflict or not, and I needed to think more about it. So, that's why I was just like, this one is, is something that.
Okay, okay.
I don't have a lot of thoughts on this one right now. The main things I was thinking about are further down, which is when we get into the actual structures and.
Do you want to go use first or?
Uh, I don't think I put anything in there. I think it, it goes straight to structures.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so this is, um, a style thing, but, um, some people prefer to regulate from the point of view of authorizing what you can do and some prefer to regulate from the perspective of what you cannot do. The first sentence here is written from the perspective of what you can do, so keeping in the tone of what we can do. We changed the second one to what you can do as opposed to what you cannot do, but makes it clear that if they're going to ask for the special permit, that they're not looking to violate the setback any more than 50% of the required setback for the new portion. So, if the required setback is currently 20 feet, that says we'll waive up to 10 feet. So, it puts kind of some bumpers on it. This is also a stylistic choice, you can say up to 10 feet and just say, you know, 10 feet is our hard limit. You could say, it doesn't have to be 50%, but this is more or less where you would put in that bumper as to how, like a hard limit on how far we would be willing to waive. I think the last time we saw something uncomfortable was in the six feet range, something like that. And so, this would keep us out of, you know, fire hazard, but would put some.
I think we had a, I think we just had a swimming pool or something that went into the side yard of a.
Right.
And that, that ended up, I think it was closer than 25 feet even.
No, you know what? Just clarify, it, it met the setback, but because it was on the corner lot, it was actually 50 feet.
Yes.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
It was a side.
Yeah, side.
Close to the back.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I can agree with that because of special, special circumstances for the corner. But if you might take it and put a hard number on it, then we might as well just change the zone.
Because, well, what I'm saying is, if, if we put a hard number on that, that wouldn't have been approved. Because if you actually go to the 50% of the, if it's a hard number of 50% of the setback, that pool couldn't have gotten in there because 25 would have been the setback. So, in reality, we wouldn't have been able to approve the pool by zoning rules.
We could write in an exemption also for yards with two front, or lots with two front yards. We could also do a twofer where you do 50% or hard limit, whichever is greater or whichever is less. There are two wordsmithing ways to go about that as well if you want to do a dual standard. But, the idea is just kind of, we don't need to by any stretch of the imagination decide on a metric this evening. I just kind of wanted to put some language forward of where you tweak and so that we could make, so it's a little more tangible of.
Right.
What the tweaks, like what the choices are where, when you make the tweaks. This is just one version. Um, for the, I also, um, this is redundant in some ways to special permit standards, but I did put in a clause here at the end that at our discretion, we may request additional landscaping, fencing, or acoustical screening. All three are screening mechanisms when something's close on the setback and/or stormwater improvements to mitigate potential impacts on neighboring properties. Those are the main things I could think of us ever asking for when somebody's close.
I can see those two being like added, right? If we're given leniency for a setback. I can see us saying, you gotta put in our provides because, you know, you need to build a fence.
We even said that about the pool guy.
We did, yeah, and so this gives us more ability to offset the impacts where it's like the encroachments minor generally speaking, I think as far as most of us are concerned. But we want to make sure that we are mitigating potential future impacts, that most things are pretty easy, but we have seen decks come up that we've been concerned about, um, you know, noise impacts where it's just like, all right, but they could also put up an acoustical screen that will just channel the noise upward and it looks like a normal fence, it's no big deal.
Yeah.
Rich, could you just scroll back up a little bit?
Sure.
Just so I can go back over that, yeah.
You see both?
That's fine.
Oh, the other thing I was thinking about was whether or not we actually wanted to waive coverage or height.
Oh, yeah.
This is, this merits more discussion. Uh, overhyped buildings tend to annoy people, so I'm not sure about whether or not we want to do that. Thirty-five, I mean, this is already, you know, largely single family homes that we're dealing with, 35 feet is the height limit, that's, you know, three and a half stories, that's a pretty, that's, that's reasonable to work with.
Well, not here though, remember? Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Two and a half now.
Uh, depends on, I'm like, depends on who you ask, what the floor to floor is, but, um.
At the moment.
Lot coverage also, we have kind of a public purpose as to why we limit lot coverage and so the thought again there was whether or not, um, the bylaws currently allow you to expand, like if your house burns down and it's all nonconforming, you can rebuild plus 500 feet. This would make sure the 500 feet generally go up as opposed to outward.
Lot coverage. The nonconforming or, or conforming lot coverage either.
Well, this is, I'm just saying that maybe we limit what we're waiving just to setbacks and not lot coverage or height. Maybe we harness our powers and limit them a little bit and leave height and lot coverage as variance conditions. This is some, this is again, more theoretical, but just something to noodle on, but, um, we have really broad latitude right now, which is great, but it's also hard to say no when you have.
Sure.
That's, um, part B is demo and reconstruction. Um, if you want to scroll, Rich, I think there's.
Yeah, yes.
Limited action in here. Yep, oh, hang on. And this.
Procton the 50%, right?
Yep.
Right there.
Procton the 50%. So, that's what I was gonna, I think I'll exit this side. So, there is this about this, like, that's what I wanted to ask, chat about.
This needs refinement because there's, you're allowed to be, you're allowed to maintain your existing nonconformities, I'm just saying new, that, cause like again, it's the same idea that if you're expanding, you're building 500 square feet, that could go somewhere. So, I was just hoping that new space doesn't go into the.
So, does that mean that the, the reconstruction, is it like an either or, may not exceed by 500 square feet or?
It's currently, it was supposed to be both, they can't do both. Right now, it's just it can't be more than 500 square feet.
That's what it reads now?
Yeah, and then my, the thought was that, and this does not currently say it because I'm looking at, I was, I didn't do this and I went on vacation and then I was like, oh crap, I need to do this, so I did this in about 20 minutes. I'm sorry, I didn't put all the thoughts in, guys, but I didn't want to run late.
Does it, if I were to understand it, it should say more than 500 square feet?
And any new, um.
Or encroaching.
I'm just talking about, it's just like.
It should say, and, it should also say, and may not also encroach more than 50%.
Yeah.
Kind of that way?
Yeah.
It sounds like, it's just confusing to me.
Yeah, may not create a new nonconformity that occurs. It needs some words, you kind of see where I'm going with it.
You can't make it more nonconforming.
Yeah.
By adding the 500 feet.
So, but wait, ours owning means right now that you can increase by 500 square feet in a nonconforming?
Yeah, if it burns.
That's if it's a burn down.
Yeah.
Not.
Well, if you demo it.
Only if it burns.
No, if you do like a whole.
No, no, this is a motion. If you're doing a whole demo.
Yeah, if you're doing a total demo. Oh, that was why I was.
I just wanted to clarify that.
I was also having a thought about demolition and whether or not when we're doing alterations where the line is between partial demolition and a project that's partial demolition and alteration, that's always kind, I don't know what our demolition definition is and whether that's full structure or just 25% of the structure, cause usually it gets picky with preservation. And so, I, that was what I was noodling on.
So, that, should that say more than 500 square feet, and may not encroach more than 50%? Or may, so you have, you have a choice, you can go 500 square feet or you can encroach up to 50%?
I was, I just wanted that anything that, anything that was.
She's asking for both.
Right.
Yeah, I was asking.
500 is already there.
Right, right, but if you're rewriting it.
She's asking for.
Just the new stuff, not to encroach more than.
500 square feet, and may not be more than 50%.
Or we could just hard limit that too and just say it may not come more than, you know.
I just don't, I just want someone to have a choice, well, I can go 500 or.
Closer.
Right.
I kind of like where you're going with that.
People will come in and say, well, that's how it's.
Yeah, I'm thinking of like the, like the lake cottage properties that are.
That's what they're gonna hit, right?
Exactly, 100%.
Right.
And if they can get closer to the lot lines, they're probably a little less concerned about the 500 square feet. That might be actually be, it gives some flexibility, a different kind of flexibility. That's something to noodle on too.
Yeah, that's where you're gonna see it.
All right, and the last but not least is our friends in recreational vehicles.
There we go.
I read that one.
It was gonna be one line, you said one line.
Uh, this actually took slightly more because I had some thoughts about this too because I thought the building, the building commissioner might.
She was going on vacation, she, she, she wanted to get that.
I, uh.
She noodled this.
Well, I gave, so my thought here was, why not have the building commissioner, if they demonstrate that they can handle their heating, cooling, and waste for three months for a, whether they're in a trailer home, including mobile homes, which is how it's written in the definitions, and recreation vehicles, all encompassing, including our campers, which are also defined in the bylaws already. So, I lengthened the title to include both definitions and created, and I'm calling them a temporary home.
And the only way is that that's fully permanent as a temporary structure through the building department, through the health department.
It should be part of the permit, I would keep it open for as long as the permit's open, not to exceed 12 months or something like that.
So, I would just change it. If it was me, I would change it from.
But having for health.
It has to be a burn down? Why does it have to burn down to get temporary housing in Norfolk?
Well, I don't think.
If you, if your house gets hit by a tree and gets crushed, you can't have that trailer.
Well, in today's world, when you have houses built in the 1950s and 60s, enough people go to renovate to today's lifestyle and you have energy code, they really have to, if they'd want it.
I get it, but apply for a structure. Apply for a temporary, just like the fire, what you do for when they burn. They bring in a mobile home, they set it up to the septic, they set it up to the water, the building department makes the inspections, the fire department makes the inspections for the heat and the gas.
So, you're really just allowing, allowing.
It's fine.
I would take.
That's fine.
The fire thing out and say, you can apply for, I, I just don't want to see people living in a pop-up trailer in their driveway.
So, the process I put in here is that they can ask for, for three months from the building commissioner, and if they need more than three months, that requires a permit from us.
Well, I would just say, as long as the permit's open.
Nope.
Not to exceed 12 months or six months.
Because a lot of houses take 12 months now.
Right, that's why I was picking 12.
And if your house is crushed by a tree, you need a place to live for 12 months. Insurance company is going to pay for your temporary housing, and putting a trailer on your house is the cheapest they're going to get out, and it's the best for people, for kids, for schools, for buses. So allow it to happen, it's not that costly, and, yeah, don't, they can't live in a pop-up or a truck camp or... I mean, there's, those things have a lot different certification than those mobile homes that have HUD certification. Those are built to HUD standards. I would say, if you want changes on it, take the word "fire" out, and say, if your house... I don't care if you want to plan it, if you want to plan it, I'm tearing down a house in Norfolk Center, and put a house there, you have the area to put it, put it. The septic, you have the water. I think that'd be a better way to go about it than...
So we feel good for up to a year instead of three months?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think it, I think it needs to be tied to the permit, and it needs to...
So I would do this, because a building permit is 180 days. So I would do it for 180 days, and then you can file for an extension for another 180 days. And if the building inspector goes out and you're just not quite done, he can always give you that last 180 days.
The issuance of the building permit, though, is not necessarily going to be concurrent with the house becoming unlivable. Some people live through like the first three months of...
Oh, no, no, they can come up here and ask for a temporary housing permit through the building department.
Oh, so you're saying it's its own separate permit?
Exactly.
Alright, alright, I thought it was going to tie this up.
But it's, but it's a permit.
Yeah, so, so the old farm over there on Boardman Street...
Warelands.
Warelands.
Yep.
They've been working on that for years. Is there a reason that they couldn't have put a temporary house? Yeah, our bylaw says it, but they're restoring that to, you know, historic, that's going to take them five years. Would I be afraid to have had, I mean, that place is, I think, 30 acres. Put a unit out back, it has a septic, it has, you know, it's more affordable for the person to rebuild that house if they're there.
Well, technically, they could be living in the parlor, the milking parlor, because that is, they're renting that right now to somebody else.
It's a little cottage there.
Yeah.
They, they could, but it's a little tiny cottage.
No, it is, it's tiny, it's cute.
You know what, you can get a three-bedroom ranch on two trailers, put together, they could be living there, they could be working there a lot more, that's the way I would...
I agree with you.
I agree.
I think we should allow temporary housing that way.
That's a concept. Yeah. Because actually, to your point, I was thinking about it, a couple of years ago when there was the, we had the deep freeze in February, there was a house where the pipes burst, and they, they had a...
It wipes it out.
They wiped the house out?
It does.
And that's a little stretchy for a natural disaster, it's a, you know, it's a...
But it's a good reason to give them a permit.
It's a good reason.
Their insurance company would, we'd rather pay to put that in there, set it up. I know, we do them all the time.
There's a good sense that, I mean...
I think that's a better way to attack that, because now it's controlled, and now we have a couple of inspections between the board of health and the fire department, and some people have some eyes on it.
I like the idea that it's a, a structure, it's a, it's a, it's a mobile home structure, if you want to call it that. It's a, it's a HUD-approved home.
Yeah, I would do that.
So make that tweak.
I, um, okay, I can handle that. I have one thought, though, and all respect to the health department, my one thought, though, is if we require them to tie directly to their septic, instead of get a pump that's going to limit where they can locate and park the vehicle. So if you are me, for example, my septic is in my front yard over a stone wall, and I can't park anything there, or nearby, and so if my house burned down, God forbid, I'm just saying, more flexibility on that, and I don't know that the health department would approve pumping.
Oh, so those types...
So I was just saying, I'd be happy to leave it to the building inspector and call it a day.
So those type structures have tanks built in them, they're self-contained. So if we did a house down on the lake, you have to have a self-contained unit, and the porta potty guys come in and they draw that tank out and go...
Yeah, they, I'm fine if they want to suck it out.
I don't have any say over what they have to get for a permit, but I think we should allow them to file for a permit, and then let the building department say, you know, the fire department definitely needs the propane permit, because they can't put a tank out there without, so now they're down there.
Yeah.
And, you know, we got to hook up electricity, so there's going to be a temporary electric service to...
Unless they're running off battery, which, like, I...
It's a self-contained, essentially.
I, I have feelings about how many people were involving in the process as to whether or not it is unhelpful to a homeowner, once you have to have the fire department out to inspect a propane tank that you may not be using, because you might run on electric, or have the board of health out to inspect your septic connection that you don't actually have, because you're getting your tank suctioned. I mean, my general thought on this is that we should just stick within, you know, kind of, the stuff that, you know, we're really, at the end of the day, here, you're only looking at like occupancy of a temporary structure.
Temporary safe structure.
Yeah, and facilitating that.
Zoning-wise, you're not, right, so those are things that would happen, but this wouldn't be in here.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm very happy to leave it with building and just...
I'm almost thinking, the only thing you need to take out and maybe add, so you take out the, the, the fire scenario, that, that, that has to be the...
Yeah, fires are...
Take out the fire out, we don't have to worry about that, and I would actually... I, I, I don't mind, I don't mind the recreational motorhome, I just don't mind it. If somebody's going to live there for...
I don't either.
Three months or four months, I mean, people, people live in them year-round already, so, I mean, they...
But it should get permitted.
It, I think there needs to be a permit, it has to be permitted or something. Because it's, it's over a 30-day thing, so that's a recreational vehicle that's going to be there for more than 30 days. It needs a permit. But that's, that should be already caught by the building department or whatever.
Not necessarily.
Who, who catches whether I have a trailer that I'm living in?
Your neighbor, you think those two that we dealt with, those were called in by neighbors? Those weren't the building, one was the building, one was he was checking inspection.
That was the neighbor.
I know. I'm sorry, the other, the other one was a neighbor that called, complained about it. I mean, he's not out looking for...
I think we're just trying to facilitate an avenue that is as easy as possible for homeowners to go ahead, renovate their house, live in their camper if they want to for a couple of months. Whether we say, "Hey, let's try that for three months and, you know, revisit it at six months," whether we say, "Hey, do that for six," I don't really care. I just think the, my personal perspective on this is that we also recognize the nature, that these are temporary structures. We recognize that this is actually, living in campers is a very common thing in the rest of the United States, and we're just kind of highfalutin here in Massachusetts, people manage to do this without toasting themselves all the time. I think it'll be okay.
So we might want to tweak, I'm thinking, a little bit, if you do the recreational vehicle, because this, you could end up with a cousin Eddie.
Yeah, we don't want cousin Eddie.
On the property?
Yeah.
Right, the way this is written now? We might want...
Well, is Cousin Eddie doing a significant renovation and rendering the structure uninhabitable?
I'm thinking Cousin Eddie from vacation is not doing any of that.
Right.
Well, and that's why I'm saying Cousin Eddie would not be entitled to this, because they're not renovated. You have to still be doing construction.
So you could work, you could tie it to a permit that within, within 30 days, a building permit must be applied for, or something.
Tied to a building permit.
Yeah, I would, I would, because ain't nobody in this room going to go check.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright.
We should say that, that you are only eligible...
And I'm not afraid to say 180 days, because that's, nobody's doing a major remodel for less than 180 days. Not today.
Yeah, absolutely not.
So, but I think it's...
If it was 180 days, and then it can be extended?
It can be extended.
Yeah.
In association with the building permit.
The building permit's extended.
Yeah. It just needs some wordsmithing to say that this is only for properties with an active building permit.
Correct.
Right.
An active building permit, an active building permit is a permit that has been inspected within 180 days. If you don't have an inspection within 180 days, your building permit is null and void, unless you ask for an extension. So, that, that would be tied to the building permit.
Yeah.
100%.
I can, I can wordsmith this to capture that.
I don't care what they live in, but, yeah.
I'll turn some edits around for you guys, and...
That I'm okay with.
Send something back for Rich, just an email.
Yeah, and then I'll send it out and you can comment.
Rich will send it out, and then we'll not reply all, because we don't reply all on the emails, but I'll move something quickly while I remember that this happened.
Yeah, we, we got... And then in terms of the timing, so the warrant opened up last Monday, and then it'll close September 5th.
Yeah.
Okay.
When do you need a placeholder?
By September 5th.
Okay, only a placeholder by September 5th, folks, we just need a title.
Right, but same, we'll be able to even talk about some more at the August 20th meeting, right? Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda, yeah, yeah. So just one thing at the top of this, because again, we've been talking about it for a little while. What was the restrictions on the type of mobile home? I mean, because, again, when you just say, just recreation vehicles, I mean, as Mike had said, we don't want a bunch of pop-ups showing up.
The RVs are defined in our zoning bylaws as having a chassis and like three other things.
Okay, so something will tie, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so what I, so this currently only says mobile homes.
Right.
And so, the, we don't have a definition for mobile homes, we have a definition for trailer homes, including mobile homes, which is, so, and then we also have a separate definition for recreation vehicles. And so, since we had kind of lumped some people with RVs into trailer homes, because there is ambiguity as to whether or not they're overlapping definitions, by including both, it makes it explicit. But the RV definition does not include pop-up campers, because it, because it has more things going on with it.
Yeah, because you get some...
400 square feet would be one of those.
Right, can I think about some of those? Oh, well, there, I see now, you know, because it's, I'm saying, because some people have the, even on the back of a pickup truck, they have that little one...
The little shell guy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, very good, I just wanted to confirm that's tied, okay.
Yeah, so that, my rationale was to make it clear which definitions we were actually...
The RV, the way it's defined, does it say it's motorized?
Uh, it's, it says that it can be towed, I believe, it says a vehicle which is...
Yep.
Yep.
So it could be self-propelled.
Yep.
So it could be a five-wheel, or fifth wheel, not a five-wheel, that's a fifth wheel, right?
Right, it's a fifth one, yeah.
Fifth wheel, or like an RV of justice, like a Winnebago.
I mean, my son's got a 32-foot bumper tow, he could do that. It's a nice trailer.
I think the way that says US Code of Federal Regulations, I'm pretty sure that's not going to include a truck cab. A truck cab.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Alright.
Okay.
Courtney, thank you.
No problem.
Definitely, thank you.
With all that, anybody have any other new business?
Anything else, Rich? No, that was it.
Do we have any, did we have any meeting minutes from last meeting?
No, not ready yet.
Alright.
They're not ready yet, right, Lynn?
They are not.
Okay, okay.
I think there are three other sets that had to be created on the double, bummer dude.
Well, we only have one, one set pending at the point, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting for Wednesday, July 16th at 8:20 PM. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye, thank you, so move.
Thank you.
Enjoy your night. I'm going to go find something to eat.